Good evening and welcome. I will call to order the Yakima City Council Study Session on September 9th, 2025. We'll start with the roll call, please.
Berg.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
Byers.
Present.
Deeseo.
Here.
Glenn.
Here.
Roy.
Here.
Herrera is absent and excused.
Thank you. Next is public comment, and we will allow 15 minutes for public comment this evening. If you make a public comment, please make sure that you fill out a sheet in the lobby and turn it into the city clerk. You'll have two and a half minutes, and when you come to the podium, give us your name and the city in which you live. Also, a reminder that I don't have one here. But anyway, there's no election airing allowed from the podium, which means you can't talk about any candidates or ballots coming up in November. Thank you. All right. I have a sheet from Ken Johnson.
Honorable mayor, members of the council and city staff, I'm Ken Johnson, president of Yakima Valley Trolleys. I have two things I want to talk with you about tonight. They're both in the envelope that I put on your desks. The first one is a report from Mr. Gorchester of Performance Plain LLC. Mr. Gorchester is known in Olympia as the money man because he puts together huge financing projects for the state and for their contractors. We asked him to come to Yakima and look at our Sixth Avenue project to see whether it could be built, excuse me, whether it could be built in the full meal deal with the track, the trail, the road and everything without having to raise new taxes, because I know that's a big concern of yours. He said absolutely yes. He said it would be easy because you have the TBD money that you can use as match for some excellent state grants that are available for this type of project. So I'm just asked that you read through what he has written, study it, get to know it, understand it, because I think it'll give you the roadmap of how to get funding done without having to raise taxes. That should be a big relief for you. The other thing I want to talk to you about is the Seela line from the bridge to the end of the line at Seela through Seela Gap. We recently had that inspected by a professional rail inspection service, and they found that the track was, quote, "in very good condition." They found two defects. One was a broken rail. One was vegetation and tumbleweeds that blocked the track. Those are the only things stopping it from being used again for the trolleys. Our volunteers can replace that broken rail. We can remove the vegetation, and the track will be ready to go again. We can do that at no cost to the city. And I know you have heard from other people that are saying, oh, it's going to cost $20 million to reopen the Seela line. Absolutely untrue. Please come to us for information about the track, about what can be done, what needs to be done, what's already been done, and we'll always give you the straight truth on it, and we'll always be happy to meet with you anytime as long as we need to. So call on me if you need to. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. That is the only slip I have, so I will ask Mr. Beeler, is there anyone online who wishes to address the council this evening?
No, Mayor Byers, there is not.
Thank you. Then I will close the public comment session, and we'll move into our study session items. The first one is item 3A, which is the 2025 second quarter financial report, and our director of finance, Craig Warner, will be presenting.
Good evening, council. The first thing that I kind of wanted to start off with is, number one, to apologize to you because this is September, and you're just now getting your second quarter financial report. Okay? This is one of those things that, when I first got here, I really looked at what you received, and I think there's some information that you need in addition to what you've been receiving historically. Not everything that you've received in the past is in here, but I think there's a different way of looking at the general fund, and that's kind of what I want to kind of go through with the council tonight. The general fund is really a fund where your general revenues come into. So your property tax, your sales tax, certain utility taxes. And I say certain because councils have set aside certain utility taxes for certain things. So there's a certain amount of your refuse utility tax that comes in for clean cities. That doesn't belong in the general fund because it's not general. It's specifically supposed to be for clean cities, so that money should be outside. The same thing with some of the money for your aquatic center. There's some set aside money for that. That doesn't come into the general fund. Everything else should come into the general fund, and then you can track where it goes. And it's something that is pretty straightforward, and I'll get into it. We call it transfers, where you then take the money from the general fund and transfer it out. In the past, it appears it's what's happened is, is before that money's been deposited in the general fund, it's automatically just allocated. It's not wrong because we get audited, and the state auditors look at it and say that's okay, but it makes it a lot harder to try to understand where all your general revenues go and to track where they are. And I'll give you an example. One of the first things when I got here, we were looking at the general fund budget, and we were talking about things like parks and streets and what the cut would be potentially for those programs. And when I looked at it, those aren't in your general fund because that money that funds streets and parks comes in, and before it gets deposited in the general fund, they put it in the streets and the parks fund. So it was difficult for me to look at it and say, how do you cut something that's not in the general fund? So what we're changing as we go through this is making sure that all the general revenues come to the general fund, and then the money goes out. So the money will come in to the general fund, and then money for parks, for streets, for other things will go out from the general fund, and we'll be able to track it much better. Okay? So parts of that, that's part of the reason why this is a little bit late. We're hoping to set this up so that literally we can do these reports on a monthly basis if you want them, but at least quarterly so council can see and understand. Okay? And also-
Appreciate that for the accuracy of transparency to council and to the community. So thank you.
Exactly, and that's what we're trying to do. We want people to understand where the money is and where it's going. That transparency piece is very important for us overall. Also, as I go through this, if you have questions, please feel free to stop me and ask a question. I'm going to try to go through it fairly fast. I think I said 15 minutes, didn't I? And my opening was five.
Yeah, but I know. With questions, it'll be okay.
Okay.
Just do your thing.
Okay. So let me get this going here. So we've talked about the general fund a little bit, and really, the two questions are, where does the money come from and where does the money go? So that's what we're going to try to start on. And as we go through this, tonight is really about the general fund. There's going to be some things that we're going to add to this as we go with quarterly reports going forward, because I think there's other funds that you want to see. The general fund is, like I say, just the general revenues. But parks, for example, you give money to parks. Well, parks also generates income as well, so it's what the general fund provides, what they generate, and they have a separate fund. So if you want to know then all about parks, that's where that information is. Streets does the same thing. Clean Cities does the same thing. All of our utility funds, all the same kind of setup. And there's lots and lots of funds. And I know I'm going to be next week asking for two new funds, but I'm hoping at some point we can kind of shrink some of those funds down so there's not quite as many to look at. So as we go through, this is something that I've always had in the back of my mind, and we've always talked about, and it's kind of talked about statewide, which is cities kind of have a three-legged school stool of funding. It's your sales tax, which in the city of Yakima is 33.9% of your general fund revenues, your property tax, which is 24.8%, and your utility tax is 23.8. So in your general fund, 82.5% of your general fund is funded by one of those three taxes. Okay? And this pie chart, and I apologize that it's probably hard to read. Hopefully, you have a printout or you can look at it on your computers. This is really then broken out the categories, and you'll see the dark green, the orange, and the blue are those three taxes. Again, 82.5%. And then you see things like investment earnings, which is about 2.67 million, licenses and permits, which is about 1.8, and $11 million, which is other. And a lot of that is intergovernmental revenues, which means it's money that we get from the state or the federal government that comes in. Lots of times, it's grant-type things, charges for services, and then also franchise fees. Or one thing that we'll talk about a little bit later is the gambling tax that we get from a couple of our gambling establishments. So let's talk about the biggest three, which are those three, sales tax. Sales tax right now through six months is at about 43.7%, and it's kind of declining through the first six months, from the first six months of where we were in 2024. The likelihood that we end up collecting the full amount that we budgeted is probably not likely. Right now, we're projecting that we're going to probably be down about $2 million on that. One of the things that I wanted to mention was, there's really three sales taxes that are here. There's the 1% that we get. So if you think about sales tax, 6.5% of it goes to the state just right off the bat. Then there's 1% that's left for cities, but we have to give 15% of what's collected in our city to the county. All cities have to do that. Then there is the 3/10ths of a cent sales tax, which that is, 60% of that goes to the county first, and then the 40% is then allocated out to the rest, to the actual cities. And there's also then a criminal justice 10th of a cent. That one truly is ours to keep, whatever's collected in the city. And then there's another one called affordable housing. This is one that next week, you're going to see a request to have a new fund created that's called the Affordable Housing Sales Tax. This is money that started in 2021. It should have not ever probably been put in the general fund. It's dedicated to affordable housing. It was something that the state is giving us a credit against their share of that 6.5%. And it needs to be in a separate fund so that we can track how we spend it. It's got to be used for proper affordable housing. So we're going to ask to do that, and then all of the money that's been collected from 2021 forward, which is about $870,000 and change, we'll put that into that fund so that going forward, we can track it. Okay? And then the little line graph, I got to get better with my graphs. That red dot, what I'd really like it to show is, is it actually should be below the 2020 amended, and that would be about a $2 million reduction because, again, we're seeing sales tax low. But what's interesting is if you look at July and August, July and August, if you compare those to 2024's actuals, you will actually see that we are actually higher for the first two, those two months, and it's the first time all year that we've had that, where we've collected more than the prior month the year before. So we're hoping that we kind of have weathered the storm of the reduction in sales tax and maybe at least have flattened out and not seeing reductions. Property tax. I bring my dollar bill with me everywhere I go because it's always really important, I think, that people remember that overall, the city only gets 20 cents on every dollar that comes in. So the majority of it's going to the schools, the state school levy, that's 62 cents on every dollar. We get 20 cents. Yakima County gets 11. The regional library EMS and flood control round out the rest of it. Property tax then comes in. We get a little bit of money every month, but really, there's two major months we collect the majority of the money. First half taxes are due in April. Second half taxes are due in October. We usually get a little more in the first half in April because some people actually do pay their full sales tax, or their full property tax for the full year at that first due date. So right now, we've collected about $12.5 million. So we're at about 55.8%. That tracks with where we normally are for, you know, from prior years at this point. So really, property tax is kind of one of those taxes that's pretty bulletproof. You know, you can have the ad valorem tax added by, you know, the 1% plus new construction. So the only real big factor is, is new construction up or down in the city, and right now, I would say that the new construction is doing very well. Yes?
So I've had discussions with different people. It was my understanding that the city owned properties. We do not, the city does not pay property tax on those. The only thing they pay is flood insurance. Is that true?
That's correct. Yeah.
So like the property on Fifth Avenue that we bought from the car dealership, that went from generating revenue for taxes, property taxes, to generating nothing, right?
Right. Yes. So any government does not pay property taxes on their property, so Yakima County doesn't either. The city doesn't on any property they have. So it is one of those things where, to get it back out on the tax rolls, you know, if the city has surplus property that's sitting around, not only would we get some funds from selling the property, but that property would go back on the tax rolls. Yep, absolutely.
It also applies to a lot of, like Yakima Housing Authority doesn't pay property taxes either, to my understanding. These NGOs that are providing housing, they're tax exempt as well.
Yeah, it's, when I was across the street, one of the things that we always looked at was the, what was the new exemption that the legislature would give away every year? Because it would. And the challenge is then is, we are, we can only grow by 1%. So if you give a bunch of exemptions to others, then that means everybody else pays more than a 1% growth because, at the end of the day, we can grow, we can accept more than 1% or we can, we can only collect more than 1%. But at the end of the day, if the total assessed values drop because of the exemptions, then people pay more. Yeah. Does that make sense?
There's nothing we can do about that either, from our perspective.
Nope, it's all in Olympia. So.
Thank you.
The utility taxes, this is an interesting one because, and I bring this up because I wanted to make sure that, you know, I put it before the council so you understand. In the utility taxes, there's several taxes that we collect for water, sewer, refuse, storm drainage. Those are all things that are taxed on services that are provided by the city. They're all taxed at a 20% rate. Utility taxes collected at 6% are electric, natural gas, cable television, cellular telephones, and then regular telephones. And then there's a special utility taxes collected on private brokered services. This would be like private water and private garbage services that are in the city. So private water, for example, would be Nob Hill Water. Their rate's 20%. Private garbage is actually at 25%, okay? Those are all things that past councils or this council have passed in the past, and those are the rates that we collect for those utilities.
As a person who pays those bills, that 25 isn't the whole story because the state takes additional 5%, and then they charge sales tax on top of it. So you're paying almost 40% taxes if you use a private refuse deal.
Yeah. This is just the taxes just for the city that we collect.
Yeah, there's a lot more on my bill than just Yakima.
Yep. Yep. So what I've tried to do here is, and there's a bunch of these, these are basically the ones that we collect the utility taxes for that are on our things. The water utilities, the sewer, the refuse, and the storm drainage. For the most part, they look right about where we would expect. Some of them are larger than others. So for example, sewer utility is 4.971 million. We're at 49.4%. We're right on target for most of these. The next one, though, is for the electric, the private water, the gas utility, and the private garbage. The first one is really the main one that I wanted to talk about, which is the electric utility. That was budgeted at just over, just almost $6.1 million, and as of right now, we're at 63.4% of that, or 3.86 million. We believe that that number could be as high as 7.5, 7.6, 7.7 million dollars. That in itself is going to help us offset that sales tax loss that we're seeing. So, and the rate didn't change. We didn't change the percentage of the tax, but we believe that this is based on the cost of the utilities have gone up, and that's how this number is increasing for us. So just like anything else, if the price of a vehicle goes up, we get a little more sales tax. So overall, the gas utility tax, that one's an interesting one. It's at 1.7 million, and we've almost collected that already. So we're not sure exactly why, but it's higher. Yeah.
Well, yeah, I mean, gas rates have also gone way up.
Yeah, yeah, it has. Private garbage-
I'll just say that my electric bill just came in. Went up over 50%.
Did it? Okay.
Mine is quite high.
Yeah. The private garbage utility is at 39.5, and we just want to let you know, some of the times, we don't always get the numbers in to be able to post in. So this was actually only five months. So if we get a normal average increase, this is probably going to be right in the ballpark of where it needs to be. The other one that also, so I don't have to go through all these, but cable TV was also one that was only five months collection, not six. Other revenues that we have then are investment earnings. Investment earnings are a little unique because we have to do something, and I used a term called amortization, and what it really boils down to is, is we have investments that we buy, and we keep them longer than a year, some of them up to five years. At the end of the year, we have to go out, we have to find out what the value was on the market. And if you go back five years ago, if we were holding an investment, that's back in the day when we weren't even getting a full 1% on our investments. So because we are holding it, if you go out at the end of the year and try to find somebody that wants to buy an investment that makes a half a percent, when they can buy a CD for four and a half, they're not going to buy it. So the market's very light on that. So we end up having to book a loss on that investment at the time, but our policy is that we don't sell the investments at a loss. We will hold on to them, and we will basically keep them until they have matured, and then we will get the money, and then we'll take that money and hopefully reinvest and get a better return on it. But that's one of the reasons why the investment interest rate now is low. It actually is doing very well, but we have a few of those investments that are starting to finally time out and will eventually be replaced by better interest investments. Licenses permits, we're at 71.8%. That's because there has been a big surge in single and family, multifamily homes, which is really good. We also know that a lot of times, licenses permits may be a little heavier in the spring when, you know, people are ready to go and build. So Bill would be able to give you probably a lot more information on that. And then franchise fees and other taxes are below the 50%. The biggest reason on this one is, is we've got a couple of our gambling establishments that are required to do reporting, and I don't know what's going on with those, but for the last couple of years, we've looked at their reporting, and they will report three or four, $500,000, and the next month, it comes back as a negative, and it's all washed out. So I'm not sure what's going on with that from a standpoint, because what happens is-
Gambling.
Yeah, maybe.
Right.
They lost? Yeah, I don't know. But the money comes, you know, the gambling establishments and most of these go to the state, and then the state gives us the money back. So we're working with the state, trying to figure out exactly what's going on with So then we get into, so any questions on the revenue, I guess, I should ask before I keep going? Ultimately, then, where we're at is then is, where do we spend our money? And you'll see a couple of pie graphs here. What I've tried to do is go in and show you a picture of mainly where we spend most of our money, which is public safety and law and justice. Those are the two, the two green areas. That in itself ends up being 77%. And I know there's been a number that you've heard about 83%, and again, that's because those transfers weren't part of that. This is the full meal deal picture, and my goal is, is that when you ask somebody going forward, you ask me, you ask one of my staff, this is going to be what you get, it's going to be everything. It's not going to just be things that weren't, because prior, that 83% did not include streets and parks in that number when you did the calculation. Okay? So as you go down through here, public safety is at 68%, law and justice is 8.3, streets is 5.8, parks and recreation is 7, and then there's just over 10% that is for basically everything else in our general fund. So 10.6% or $10 million as a whole. So you can pretty well see where the general fund, general revenues go in the city of Yakima.
Is this a year-to-date?
Uh, this was actually the budget. This was the 2025 budget. Yes. Mm-hmm. It's kind of a, I want to make sure you understand, this is if the budget was amended for all those transfers, so you could see that. So I want to make sure it's not that official budget, but it's based on budgets if you put them together this way. And that's kind of how we'll present going forward for '25, and then also when we adopt the budget for '26, this is how it will be presented. You can also then see what we have in each of those departments. So under law and justice, it's legal, it's municipal court, it's indigent defense. And I apologize how small this is.
Thank you.
It's, yeah, it's pretty small.
It means nothing to me.
Okay. And then public safety is police and fire, but we've also included code administration because we think that's really important under public safety. So those are the two biggest areas that we spend the money, law and justice, public safety, and then everything else in general administration. And as you go down through there, you'll see a couple of things towards the bottom. One is something called city services reimbursement. It's a negative number, and that is because those are the costs that we charged, all of those other funds that are outside the general fund, they reimburse us for their costs, so they help offset the net cost of all of those other general administration departments. And then you'll see that other number called operating transfers, and for 2025's amended budget, it's estimated, it's at $16.24 million. So that, again, is the big number that you normally never saw when you talked about the general fund. Okay? So the grand total for the general fund budget is, right now, is $95,471,579.
And that's a new number for those watching at home.
Yep, it is.
Yeah, it didn't grow. It's just being accounted for.
Yep. So what we wanted to do then is kind of explain then where the transfers went, and there's really, the ones up on top, that total up to $3,977, those are for public safety. So there's some money that goes into the police pension fund, that's $800,000, and this is for our LEF retirees. And then you've got fire for $850,000 for their fire pension, again, for our LEF retirees. And LEF is law enforcement officers and firefighters. And then you have some money that, most of this came from the 3/10ths of a cent criminal justice sales tax. We put some money aside for capital, and then we have 1.65 million that we send to the Suncom dispatch center. That's the general funds portion. And then $270,000 go there from the 3/10ths criminal justice sales tax fund. And then down below, there's another 12.2 million, and you'll see that parks, the first one is almost, right off the bat, is almost $5 million. That is the general fund's contribution to parks operation. Streets get about 3.1 million. And then we have $700,000 that we have for the aquatics facility, $450,000 for pool or for the, this is charter money for parks, but it goes to cover the debt for the YMCA. And there's $450,000 also for the debt for the SOZO facility. And then parks remaining capital, if you take that 450 twice, that's $900,000, and the remaining balance for the charter for parks capital is $135,000. And then the street overlay for the streets charter is $2.425 million, and that's factored in with all of the growth that we have to factor in under the charter. So if you want to know what the transfers are, that's the list to go to and take a look. So another way to look at the general fund budget then of the $95 million is, how is it actually allocated? The blue is 50%. The blue is 50% of it and that's salaries, with benefits being about another 18%. So 68% of the general fund is salaries and benefits. The green is the transfers. And I will tell you, most of that money, that it, when it goes out to those other departments, is also being spent on salaries and benefits. So the number in salaries and benefits is, is really probably higher than that. It's just being spent in another department. And then other services and is, is your professional services and that kind of thing. And that's just under 14 million or about 15%.
Is that like contracts?
Contracts and. Software supplies, that kind of thing, yeah.
Is it possible to show in the transfers with the salaries and wages?
We probably could look at that, yeah, going forward. You bet. Let me, let me mark that down.
The question I have as I look at that is, okay, we have a human resources that generates the salaries or the payroll for city employees. Do they do that for everybody? Or are there some of the other institutions that have their own payroll set up and their own process?
Not if you're in the city of Yakima. Everything comes through our payroll process, so, yeah. So, and I, again, I apologize for everybody that, how small this is, but basically what this really is then is it gives you kind of an idea of, if you look at 2023, 24, 25 actuals through June 30th, 2025's amended budget and then where we are, you'll see that the first seven, eight, nine lines is the revenues. Sales tax, property tax, utility tax, main, mainly the bigger ones. And if you look at that, we've collected through, through June, 43.7 million dollars of a $90 million revenue. So we're at about 48.3%. And if you look at those prior two years, we're actually a little bit below the 2024, but the big number is really because of, of sales tax at this point. And then if you look at expenditures, again, we broke it out by the salaries and, and benefits, et cetera. You'll go down through and see that we have spent 44.368 million, which is at about 46 and a half percent. So if you, if you compare the revenues to the expenditures, we're actually, we've spent about $618,000 more through six months than, than we, than we brought in in revenue. But if you look at the, the 2025 amended budget, that net loss was actually budgeted to be 4.8 million dollars. So at this point in time, we actually are about 4.2 million dollars better than we anticipated. Now, we know that there's more expenses in the second half of the year that are coming up. And hopefully the third quarter, I'll be able to give you a better idea of what that number looks like. So don't get too giddy on the, you know, that we're saving 4.2 million. It's probably going to be a million or two when it's all said and done. But we'll hopefully be able to give you some more information at third quarter. So then, one of the things that's, that's, that's interesting to look at then is, is if you look at where we were in 23, 24 actuals, these would be approximate reserves. And again, I say approximate because we're having to go back to prior years to make comparisons. So these weren't the actual numbers because we're, we're having to bring a bunch of numbers from different places to make them work. But we're showing that, you know, in 23 and 24, we had a, a reserve of about 16.7%. That, that was the reserve policy. And in both of those years, we met that reserve. You'll see the policy reserve was that 16.7. And then the surplus was how much our, our actual ending reserves were compared to that policy reserve. And there was a little bit of a surplus in each year. In 2025, we dropped the reserve level down to 12%. And by doing that, it made, it, it made more money available to spend because we had a deficit in the 2025 budget. As of June, we haven't spent a great deal of that. We still have about 4.9 million dollars. But if you look to that final column, that $710,000 is the, is kind of the difference. And I apologize, this was the one slide that was not done before we had to have this ready for, for council last week.
So you're saying if the year ended right now, our deficit's not nearly as bad?
If it ended right now, yeah.
Come on.
You're wishing.
Things up.
That's right. Just ended, right? Yeah, there you go. So in the end, I guess what I, what I would like to say is, is these are the reports through June 30th, which is 50% of the year. We're seeing revenues at about 48.3% of the budget and expenditures at about 46.5. Most everything's tracking fairly consistently. We are a little worried about the sales tax because I think we are going to be about $2 million short of what was projected. But the utility taxes and specifically electrical revenue, utility tax seems to be what's going to actually benefit us overall. So the only other thing would be that overtime for police and fire in the 2025 budget was not fully budgeted. So that is going to be a challenge and that's probably one of those things that as we, as we reconcile in the second half, that's going to be something that's going to eat some of that fund balance. So that's probably, that's my presentation. If there's any questions?
My electric bill will help you.
I was going to say that, I mean, the, the gas bill will probably help as well. I mean, we're already at almost 100%.
Right, yeah.
We haven't even hit winter.
Exactly.
I appreciate the openness and the clarity of your presentation. And I'm also proud of the fact that as our number three, since I've been in on city council, which isn't that long, I, I'm very impressed with the work you've done up to this point, so thank you.
Thank you.
I would reflect the same.
All right, thank you. All right. Thank you very much.
I think that unless council has more questions, nope. Great job, thank you.
Thank you.
Very clear presentation.
Yes.
Loved it.
All right, so we're going to item 3B, which is 2025 community development update with Al Preston, community development director.
All right, good evening, council. All kinds of things are happening on this computer that I'm not touching.
Being remote controlled.
It, somebody's, somebody's doing something. So that, look at that. Okay, so this is my semi-annual trip before you to talk about the SIP update. But while that's good news, you know, community development is more than just engineering, right? And so this opportunity, you know, kind of balances with what Vicky's going to present later. So I get to go through community development and our accomplishments this year. So I'll just start off, or maybe I won't. I don't know what's happening.
We can see it.
That was a very good presentation, thank you.
In summary, we're doing really good things and I appreciate it. Any questions?
There you go, you're back.
We're getting there, we're, we're, we're. Okay, now the question is, do I have control or not? We will find out here. Let's see, which one of these buttons? Oh, look at that, okay. All right, so I'm going to start off with my favorite topic, which is engineering. And so what you're going to see here is a list of the transportation projects. This isn't as I normally present it, you know, past, present and future projects. But this is kind of what is going on currently, right now, in, on the transportation side for capital improvements. You know, we've got the projects that are being finished. 72nd and Nob Hill, which should be, or 72nd and Washington, excuse me, which should be open by the end of this week, I hope. You'll see a picture later on of 34th and Fruitvale, which is open. There's still some cones and stuff out there as well. We're going to be starting our Nob Hill and Fair Avenue project, which has been around since I was a youngster. And we finished. Uh, 2011. I'm claiming I was younger. Yeah, we finished North First this year, right? And so there's, there's all of these projects that are going. We're doing more paver, alley pavers, you know, this thing. So, so there's a lot of stuff and I'll get into a little bit more detail with this a little bit later. But that's just the transportation side. There is a lot of other capital improvements that are going on in the city that have nothing to do with transportation. And here's a, a small list of those. I think it, well, maybe not small, it's most of them. But we've got the, you know, the underserved, that water and sewer is, is going out with right now. The Nelson Dam and all the work that they've been doing over the last couple of years and then their projects. We've got facility projects that are in there. We've got, you know, the convention center and Capitol Theaters doing things like that. So, so there's a lot of capital improvement projects going on. What's not on here is the airport, right? And I think Vicky's got that in her presentation, so that's missing from this. And I think the, the, the largest takeaway from this is most of this is done without the general fund. And you'll see the number a little bit later and the general fund can't afford this. And so it's a good thing that all of our divisions, regardless, are doing an excellent job of taking and leveraging what general fund they do have and transferring that into match for grants. So speaking of grants, which is my favorite topic.
Good, I was giving a little.
So yeah, here, here we go. So I did tie most of this, most of this presentation to the various strategic goals that we have, that council set a couple of years ago and, and to the priorities and then the specific goals that are associated with those. So you'll see that on these slides as well. But talking about the grants, so this is just the transportation side of things. So currently, engineering is running at about 32 active transportation grants underway. That's, we have more projects than that, but that's where that's at. And there's about 46.1 million dollars worth of those and we're leveraging 1.3 million, which is a 36 to one. I know last time I was up last, in February, my love fest.
It's Valentine.
Yeah, my Valentine's Day one. That one was a 54 to one, but that was only construction. This is all funds associated with transportation. And, and we're at 36 to one, which is still, you know, insanely good number. So people have asked me why this works and how we're able to do this. And what I tell them is that my city council lets me do my job. But not only me, but all the other divisions, right? You don't meddle in our stuff. You let us do that work and we come back with, you know, ratios and return on investments like this with the funds that are allocated to us. So thank you for that. Moving on, so.
Comparatively from other years, huh, this is the most ever?
I remember two years ago, I was at 32 to one and so this is 36. I think it's my highest that I've recorded, yes.
So good jobs.
It's.
Up to 40, we can do it, Bill.
His people are exhausted.
Just keep in mind, there's only roughly three to four, three and a half people that try and manage all of that all year long. And it's hard. And the other divisions have to do the same thing, right? I don't have their ratios, but you know, water, sewer, parks, they have some construction projects too, the pool. They're all running the same kind of stuff. So real quick, tying this to the safety, so we had those active transportation projects. It's more than 25, that's why the plus is there, but I lost count. But water, wastewater and the other divisions have a lot of capital projects as well. And so, you know, that was the roundabout, the 34th roundabout. This is the under, a picture of the underserved. You know, we're trying to provide adequate water to properties that don't have it now, as well as, you know, getting people off their septic and providing sewer in their locations. And then this is just another traffic one. I have access to these pictures very readily, so that's why I can use those. And so this is a pedestrian, right? Yakima Chief Hops is on the corner. Their facility, their tasting room and their labs and stuff are on the other side. So this signal, while improving the efficiency of the intersection, also provides a safe crossing for them. I threw in this 80 million through 2027 because that list of projects that I showed, if you just added up the numbers that I had on it, it was 80 million, right? So we're looking at 80 million just in capital improvements. When I said, general fund can't, can't afford the general fund budget, it's only what, what'd you say, 95? You know, this is funded by not the general fund. That's how these capital projects are being done, citywide. Okay, now moving away from the capital projects side of things. This is a, a office of neighborhood development services, our ONDS, DS office. This is, the primary program for this year has been our single family emergency repair program. And you've seen the letters that we've put in the packet from, you know, appreciative property owners. And this is a completely federally funded program. There is no impact to the general fund on this. We have worked with legal very closely to ensure that we stay current with all the federal requirements and make sure that we're, remain eligible. But we've done, you know, 43 completed projects already this year. Small office, there's only four of them in there. And we still have 21 in progress and I was told, you know, this week, they just keep coming in, right? So these, these, this kind of effort is, is ongoing. There's, I think we're going to expand this to a little bit more next year through the consolidated plan and the action plan that we presented a couple, about a month ago now to you. I will point out too, that the CDBG funds, so are these funds, 541,000 did, was contributed to the pool. So these funds actually did, were able to go towards the MLK pool project.
No, it was. I've heard it back and forth, it wasn't.
No, it is, it's done. Yeah, I, I, we, we figured it out. It was.
I think there was an issue with the 2023 money and then you had to move it or something. Then it was technical.
Yeah.
But it was worked out.
It's for a different discussion, but yes, it is done. It happened, had to happen before the end of August and it happened on August 28th, I think. So I made, we made it, we made it. Okay, so moving into, on the inspection side of things, what I wanted to point out here is we have three building inspectors and two engineering inspectors, give or take. And these are the numbers that, that they do each and every year. So last year, you know, there was about 6,600 total inspections between building. That's, this is the commercial and residential. And then also, it includes the, the engineering side of things, remembering so in this picture. The reason these inspections, you know, are necessary is to ensure that, that developers, builders and whatnot are complying with the requirements of their permits. And then on the engineering side, you know, we take this over, right? This is going to be a public facility, public roads, sidewalks, lighting, all that. So we need to make sure that they do it in compliance and so that effort is ongoing. And currently, we're at about 5,100 of those inspections this year, so we are on pace to, to do the same amount. So the permit counter, there's been a lot of discussion at various times about permits and licensing and things like that. So the next two slides are about permits and licensing. So in 2024, we did about 2,900 licenses through the office. And then this year, we're at 23, so we're going to probably top that just a little bit. All those permits there that you see are various permits that go through the office. I wish that I could say that everybody that came to the office and dropped off an app, permit application, it was ready to go, they paid their money and they walked out with their permit. You all know that's not how that happens, right? So what we have done, we made a concentrated effort to get fully staffed. You know, last year, there was a time when we had zero people at the, I'm sorry, no, we had one. We had one person at the county for months. This year, we have been fully staffed for the first time in, well, what they tell me is they can, as long as they can remember, but I think it's around like 21 or something like that. So we've got three permit techs and a permit coordinator. And we're able to turn these things around a lot quicker, they're much more streamlined. We're, we're able to answer the phones much more regularly now, people don't have to go to voicemail. So I think that staff, now that it's fully staffed and getting that experience, this turnaround time is being improved. On the license side of things, we've kind of made a bigger change on the license side. So the, a couple of things I want to key on. So the business license, the numbers, you see 9,000 active business licenses, okay? There's a lot of work that goes along with that, but that's not really the, the number I want you to focus on. I want you to focus on the business license because those are new business licenses. So this year, we are up quite a bit. I think it's 1,400 in last year and 1,900 this year. And I attribute this primarily to, we took a vacant codes position and removed it last year and moved it over to licensing and dedicated a person to licensing. There were, when that person came on board, there were 700 plus licenses in the queue waiting to be moved through. And we were 34 days in delivering those each, right? Took that long. Now there's less than 60, uh, give or take 60, and we're doing it in four and a half days. So that is a significant change and I. significant change, and I attribute that
Let's go.
To the dedication of a person for that position. And we took that position, like I said, out of codes.
That's a huge one. Everyone at home, mark that one down. That one's a big one.
Yeah, it is big.
So, I wonder if every person that had a dog in Yakima bought a license. He needed another whole staff person.
Yeah, I was going to kind of just let that one slide. That's just there for your...
Yeah.
You can look at it.
What are the regular...
Do you have any idea how many businesses are operating that haven't bothered to get a license?
Oh, yeah.
Um, I have zero idea on that. I couldn't tell you.
I suspect that there's quite a few, from my experience, but, you know, you see the food trucks out there, and then you see people driving up and down the streets. They should all have business licenses, shouldn't they?
So, that's one of the things that our code compliance officers help with. So, going back to Craig's slide where he talked about safety, I'm sorry, where he talked about, yeah, public safety, where code compliance was in public safety, that is one of the things that they help us do. You know, they go out there and they can look at some of that stuff. I can't say any of that without talking about legal too, because, right, we, legal plays a valuable role in all of that. We can't do anything without...
What was it in '23? 34 days? I mean, man, I feel like it was even higher in '23, but...
I didn't go back and check.
Yeah.
So, this was, this was a big enough change that...
That's a huge.
It's amazing.
Exactly.
Absolutely.
So, those new businesses I talked about, that 1,900 that we've already got, I asked Sam to check, and within their applications, they're showing roughly $280 million worth of revenue that's associated with those. So, going back to Craig's sales tax numbers, I don't know if that's, we're going to see any bump from that this year, maybe next year. And what I also don't show on here is what didn't get renewed, right? Because we don't keep track of that. It's not, because all the renewals are done by Department of Licensing and not through us.
Right.
So, that's why these numbers are what it is.
Olympia now, is that not correct?
Yeah. What's that?
That goes, it goes over to Olympia at that?
Correct. Yep, yep. Okay, so...
But four and a half days, that's a massive shift.
Yes, it's, it's...
Huge.
It is. Okay, so, then, moving over to codes. So, we've talked about codes before, and there's been various discussions regarding it. So, right now, the code compliance officers, one of their primary duties is to take properties that are on, that look like that on the left, and turn them into properties that look like that on the right. Codes does not go out and do that proactively. This is a, primarily a complaint-driven program. And so, in addition to that, it's also primarily voluntary abatement, right? We go out, we talk to them about the code violations, we cite all the relevant information, and most of the time, they voluntarily clean up their property themselves, right? And there's no, there's no assessed fees that come with that or anything like that. And we turn the properties, and the neighbors are happy, right? Because the property's cleaned up. To date, this year, we had seven, we've had 776 new cases, of which 574 have already been closed. Total closure, 732, that's because there was, you know, 200-plus that were carried over from last year. So, you can see that we're bringing those two for abatement and conclusion with quite a success rate. In addition to that, we have changed the policy, not the policy, we've streamlined the process a little bit. We've worked very closely with legal, and then, and Vicky's got some slides relating to this even further, about that process, right? We've talked about the fees per day and all of that kind of thing in the past. And so, last year, in 2024, best as we could tell, it's around $625,000 was brought in via those non-compliant properties. It's primarily done through the property tax assessment, so in April and in October. That's why, right now, we're showing 315,000, but again, we're estimating, it's right on track, basically, to collect that same 600,000. And again, we already removed one code compliance officer from this for the licensing. So, we're doing this with four code compliance officers currently and one out of Cleveland City. Okay, this is actually the last slide I have. And so, planning also has some successes this year as well. So, planning takes a long time. Nothing in planning is short, right? They're shortening it, they're giving us, the state's giving us new deadlines for when we're supposed to get things done. And now that we're fully staffed in planning with four, we're able to hopefully meet all of these things. But currently, we've done 116 completed reviews, and we still have 153 in the queue. That's not, having that many in the queue is not alarming because of the timeframes, right? There's just things that are always going to be in the queue for that. Trevor gets up quite often, talks about the zoning map and the text amendments and things like that to try and help streamline and clean those things up. We've, you know, I won't get into all the different things. He's been before you numerous times this year to talk about those things. We've also done some home occupation revisions. But what I want to end with is some of the things that have happened, not just with planning, but, you know, these things start with planning, and then they go through the process in the city. And so, we have Kicks Corner, you know, this is a new, I think it's a daycare on 8th Avenue, or 8th Street, excuse me. Papay moved over and to half of the Yakima Speedway. Les Schwab just went out there in West Valley this year, and as well as...
Popped up out of nowhere.
Sorry, say again.
They popped out of nowhere, like all of a sudden.
I didn't even know they were up there.
Yeah. They're there.
Drove by and went, "When did they get here?"
Uh, and then, this is the drive-through pharmacy on the corner of, was it Nob Hill and 72nd?
72nd, right.
So, in addition to the business stuff that goes through planning and whatnot, and permitting in codes and all that, we also have the housing, right? We talked a little bit about housing, I think, a little bit earlier. So, here's the Yakima Housing Authority property on Fruitvale that is now complete. And we've got some, we see lots of fourplexes, duplexes, and, you know, triplexes, things like that for low-income housing as well. And then, of course, we have those, the large apartment complexes that go in. This happens to be Powerhouse Flats next to Fred Meyer. And then, we obviously have our single-family developments, our long plats, that have all the developments for single-family homes and things like that. So, in summary, that is what the update is for community development, as well as the capital projects for the other divisions. If you have any questions, we'd be happy to take them. Otherwise, I think I can just hand it over to Vicky.
Any questions, council?
No.
If not, we just say thank you and your departments and your staff for the excellent work.
Thank you.
Thank you. They're doing a wonderful job.
Yes.
Thank you.
Four and a half days.
Forty percent.
Come on.
Forty to one. Come on, Bill.
We're all about business here.
The last presentation this evening is our Yak, City of Yakima's Year Review with our city manager, Vicky Baker.
Good evening, council. I'm excited to share tonight a report to you of everything that's happened, kind of all across the city. I could tell you, before we get started, though, I would like to just send a shout-out to all of the employees out there for all of the hard work that they do every day. I've been here one year, and I've been incredibly impressed with them and their professionalism here. Quick response to requests, I'm going to show an amazing example of that tonight, later on, just how quick they can move when they're excited about something new. They're a very dedicated team, and it's, to me, it's important that I work with them closely, and I want you to know, and the community to know, that these are dedicated folks who care about what they do, and they care about this community. And so, they try to make a difference for us. And I appreciate all of you out there in TV land. It's been a blessing working with you this year. Thank you for a great year. So, before we start and share all the good stuff, I just wanted to start with that. So, Randy Bonds is up here. He is GIS and IT, and you've seen him before, he does magic. He's going to help me. We're going to go to the next slide and talk about Adopt a Block. We are, it's launched officially. So, this is an idea that came from Deputy Mayor Brown, and you can see him with a rake here on this slide, and Mayor Byers, right there, with Melanie from Habitat for Humanity, doing an unofficial, kind of a test drive of what it would look like. This is a block that was adopted by a church in partnership with a neighborhood champion who wanted to be a partner. And I, since you guys were there, I don't know if you would like to talk a little bit about how it went as a test drive, and then we can show you what the website looks like.
It was fantastic. We had a great time. What I loved about it, I think, the most was just, it wasn't just a group of folks trying to clean up and different things, but it was like, the community of folks came out, and we got to hang out with them and talk about, I mean, it was in Luis's neighborhood.
Right.
It was a fun time, so...
And we appreciate that, Luis, that you said, "I want to go first and to be a good example to other people on how easy that can go and how well it can be done." And just appreciate all the people that showed up that day to help. It was amazing.
Yeah, we are ready to go. We've had our MOU is signed with Habitat for Humanity. Everything is official. We've got the website. I don't know if you can get it up on the screen. Oh, there it is. Okay, so, Randy is here to kind of show how it would work. So, some of the, just for review, for community members who didn't see it the first time, you can identify a block as a, as a community member. You could say, "Hey, I, we want to be adopted. Please come, a community group, come and help us work on our block." And this is a place for people to find that block and adopt it. So, Yakima has a bunch of, if you zoom in a little bit closer, you can see some of the neighborhoods and kind of how a block would work. People can click on a block, and they can actually sign up. And this is ready to go live. I don't know if you have any questions on how it would work. I have a long presentation, so I'm not going to go too deep into this one, but I just wanted you to know that it'll be on media platforms and ready to go.
So, this works two ways. You can either say, "We need help."
Yep.
Or you can say, "We want to help somebody in Adopt a Block."
Yeah, it's, it's like, I don't know, speed dating, you know, something like that. It's like, match game, one of those, those old talk show sort of things. We're connecting people, is what we're doing.
Right, exactly.
And Habitat is willing to facilitate that. The nice thing for the city is that there's a very small cost for hosting the website, but really, there's no cost to the city. This is about putting together people who want to make a difference.
What is that orange blip? I saw like one or two on the map.
Those are adopted.
Okay.
So, if you zoom in on them, there, I think the block that was done is on there. And if you, if you adopt that block, you can upload before and after pictures. And you, it shows, you know, best practice for, from what we would recommend, although it's up to the people who adopt it, would be to go back monthly and to adopt for a period of time, so that it stays that way for a year or two, at least, if not longer. So, when we go out with the media, we'll see how much we get for response on both sides. We've had OIC say they would help get the word out as well in neighborhoods. So, we need to regroup with them and get this rolling out in the media.
One of the best things, one of the best things about that day was, we walked around doing things, is the community would come out and meet us in their front yard. And we had an opportunity just to talk to people. It's great.
Yeah, wonderful. Okay, well, let's go to the next slide, and I know you're my navigator over here.
So, this is something that's just getting started and hasn't really been advertised to the public yet?
Yeah, it's just set up now, and we will go out and advertise it now that we've had our test, and we've had our legal, and all of the reviews have been done, and everything's been signed and agreed to, so we're ready to go. So, the next thing we want to talk about is Public Works. You know Scott Schaefer, he has a huge job, lots of divisions. One of the divisions here is, has implemented City Works, which is an asset management software, which is pretty fantastic for us being able to control what it looks like with fleet. And the nice thing about this as well, it can manage everything, labor, inventory, building maintenance, road maintenance, city infrastructure, all of those things can be managed with it. But also, it helps us to avoid duplication of efforts when we have one software managing everything. And so, Public Works has been wonderful. Carrie Jones, if you're out there, Fleet Manager, working with fire and police on their fleets as well. And we will expand this, and it'll be a really great way to help financially control the fleet.
That was just this year?
Yes.
Oh, wow.
Okay, next. Parks and Rec. So, I think we know about this one. It's a gorgeous MLK Junior Aquatic Center, which opened this summer, rave reviews. Shout-out to Ken Wilkinson, who ran this project. It was huge undertaking for him. He worked with lauding moving parts. He worked with the community groups that were involved. He worked with the committee. I know you may have something to add about that committee. It was a community committee, and Mayor Byers sat on that as well. Have any thoughts?
It was a, a community fundraising group from the east side. These are people whose families are living in that area and wanted to invest in the pool themselves. And they did, first of all, they had kids go out with coin jars and just collect money that way. And if you go into the Estre Huey Community Center there, you'll see the name of every child that worked in that area up on the, on the board, which is fantastic. And then, they have done tamale sales. I've eaten a ton of tamales this year, they're great. Popcorn sales, you know, and just community events where they came in and people just, you know, for 10 cents bought the opportunity to do something. It was amazing. I think they've raised, Ken, you can tell me, but between $200,000 and $300,000, just that little group in the community.
I don't have it, I don't have it told. It was a lot.
Yeah, it was a lot of money. So, and they're actively going back to work this fall, so...
It was a great partnership.
Yes.
Thank you, Ken. It was huge. So, the stats on this slide show the attendance, which was also huge. 25,620 people. We had 2,500 lap swimming, water walking participants, 22,000 residents came for recreational swim, 52 residents did swimming lessons there, 77,000 in revenue the first season, which was, I think, a little bit shorter than what it traditionally would be. And all of these numbers will be looked at. This was the first year. So, we'll look at all of those things in the off-season now, and I'm sure there'll be great opportunities to even do better. And community partnerships as well. I've personally been reached out to people wanting to help sponsor it ongoing. Any questions on anything, just stop me. And there's experts all over this room who can answer things. Okay, next. Street maintenance. So, Scott is not here. I hope you're feeling better out there. Street maintenance supervisor, Jay Kendall, runs that area, and this is the chip seal, fog seal program, 12 miles completed, which is amazing. I don't know if you all know chip seal, fog seal, kind of the reasons why. It's extremely cost-effective for the city to do those things. It extends life of the roads and pavement life. It can improve traction, depending on what they're doing. It's a very good way for us to make our money go farther. And so, it's been a really good use of funds. It shows there, 48th Avenue through 60th, Titan Drive to Nob Hill, completed, 48 through 56th, Titan Avenue to, or Titan Drive to Summit View Avenue, and then the grinded overlay at 72nd Titan.
And I know they also do crack sealing, which, which really helps extend the life.
Oh, yeah.
And I don't have any in here about it, but I know they do that.
Yeah, they've been very busy. This is just, you know, I could have 400 slides. I really, they did a lot of work this year across the whole city. So, this is just highlights. Okay, City Hall. If I could get mine to go. There we go. Okay, again, thanking Scott's team for his work. City Hall facilities were significantly upgraded earlier this year. Bank of America Building sidewalk in front, lighting, trees were completed. It looks beautiful out there, and it's a great foundation for the future for this block. And while I'm talking about this facility, I want to also thank Mike Wentz and his team for maintaining this building every day and all the work they do. It's wonderful to see them out and taking care of the property. So, thank you out there in TV land, if you're watching. Okay, next, traffic. We're on traffic. Okay, so, we upgraded seven intersections with 12-inch LED indications, which means in English, these are light, bright...
Larger.
Larger, and they're the red, yellow, and green part. And they did also use CDBG funding to upgrade 100 streetlights around four elementary schools on the east side, brightened up the area a lot and added a lot of lighting. So, those were great projects that were done this year. Okay, transit. Transit remodeled using state funds. Thank you to Senator Curtis King out there. New interior, exterior paint, really dressed it up. They did new flooring, new front office, ADA compliant, new cabinets and an LED lighting. What a huge difference. Great job.
Yeah, it was pretty worn-looking.
Yeah, it was, it was ready. Okay, let's go to solid waste and recycling. So, you have heard a lot about this one, I think, implementing two new services that have been very popular with residents. We have the roll-off bins, which is a temporary bin that residents can ask for, and they can use for... can ask for and they can use for, you know, cleaning out a garage or, which we just did. If you're doing that at home, it's a great thing. If you didn't know, you could do that. You can, you can get it for a short term. And then the bulky waste. If you're doing, you know, bulky waste pickup is, you know, all of those huge objects that you can pay, you know, starting at $25, depending on the item, and have kind of the, the big thing that is in the garage that should be gone, they can come and get it for you. Those have been incredibly popular. And then of course, 6,000 graffiti incidents abated by Clean City. Huge number. Great job. Okay, to Yakima Fire. So Chief Markham, they had, the Yakima Fire Department continued its training this year with eight new recruits, completing the three-month academy last fall. Six more recruits completed the academy in the May to June 2025 academy this year. Yakima Fire also hosted two, two-day academy training on aerial apparatus. And they hosted Sela, West Valley, Tappanish, Yakima County, Fire District Five, and Sunnyside for that, which is great partnership across the valley. And Community Fire Department, here we go, Community Risk Reduction. So risk management is something that is important for all of our residents. We're going to actually talk more about in the upcoming, upcoming presentation to all of you about how our homeowners can maybe protect their homes better. But it's nice to have a risk reduction program out there, people talking to schools and providing safety education, out there partnering with, you know, I don't know if they're in, in businesses doing that or if it's just schools so far. But they collaborated with Red Cross, West Valley School District, Yakima School District, I don't know what that acronym is.
[laughing]
SSO, CC Chief, what is it?
It's in your notes.
Oh, you've got it in my notes here?
[laughing]
School Safety Operations and Coordination?
Yes.
Oh, hey, thank you for the notes. Okay. We also expanded our targeted safety programs, including intervention with juvenile offenders, helping people appropriately install their car seats, and helping seniors with fall prevention. We will be sharing, oh, I already said that we are going to be sharing the, how to protect your home. I'm going back to my notes now. I'll stay out of trouble. Next slide.
When I look at the efficiency of our state firefighting efforts up in the Nile, I'm thinking maybe we need to volunteer to go in and teach them how to put out a fire.
Chief is smiling. He may agree. Okay, so we're on to the next one. The Fire Master Plan, final copy is under review and will come to your, to the council soon for you to look at. It's a good review of the department and compares us to cities our size. It outlines best practices, demonstrates places we can improve our service to the community, and is a great roadmap for the future. That's coming soon. This also, this right here, this slide shows all of the stuff that we have done. So the fire engine was delivered, KME, another acronym. What's KME?
KME.
I don't know. Okay. Command vehicles have been delivered.
You're laughing because we don't know what the acronym is.
Government and their acronyms.
Yeah, there's a lot of acronyms here for me. Station 90's maintenance shop LED lighting upgrade was done. Station 94's roofing project will be completed this September. Doggy. All right. Let's get in the police department. That is one cute dog. Okay, we welcome K-9 Router to the Special Assault Unit this year. K-9 Router is specifically-trained electronic search dog and has been deployed numerous times to assist with locating electronic evidence during search warrants, as well as locating traffic devices on the vehicles of victims of domestic violence. He's also assisted in a joint FBI operation to locate evidence related to a triple homicide in Chelan County.
Wow.
Which is great stuff. You also see besides him, you see cops and sluggers and National Night Out. There are more coming up. YPD is definitely out there in the community doing a lot of really great things right now. We will look at numbers now really quick. Although it's not quick, there's a lot of numbers. I'm going to try to just go through. We had 11,000 traffic stops, averaging 86 stops a day. That's a lot. 2,600 homeless calls for service and many more contacts didn't generate a call. 337 DUI arrests, and that is also not even, that's only the ones that were caught. 150 firearms taken off the streets, 100 arrests by a blue team using flock cameras, and 11 recruits graduated academy and completed their field training. The Pro Act team opened numerous narcotic distribution cases with suspects who resided in the Yakima Inn. Over three pounds of fentanyl were recovered, along with 11 firearms being seized over a period of time. Yakima Inn was deemed a nuisance property by the city attorney. Police Department, along with the city attorney, are working with the property owners to comply with legal stipulations put in place to help curb violence and crimes from such occurring in the future. So that's just an example of one. Okay, we're going to look at numbers a little bit more on the next slide. So this is a lot of numbers and statistics. And I know we've, we've seen a lot of those things. I'm just going to kind of take some high level look at this. So NiBRS is a, a way of classifying crime. It's the federal reporting way to report. And basically, the, the Group A type of NiBRS crime is homicide, assault, and burglary, the big and more big things. And they are all kind of classified the same in all cities. And those are the way that we can really compare ourselves to other cities. So that's, that's really how we do compare ourselves. But looking at the numbers overall, I think the chief and I both agree that it's most important that we pay attention to how people feel. And how people feel about public safety is our measurement every day when we look at how we're doing in the police department and public safety. Crime is a great statistic to track and we do that. I think it's incredibly important to kind of know how we're doing. And this trend shows, things seem to be going pretty well. It's not up and it's down in some circumstances. And I think that the chief would also share that clearing crimes is incredibly important as well. You know, proactive policing, policing is another thing that he is working on. Community policing, being out there with the community, riding bikes and being in the community is great. Those things help people feel safe when they see those bikes going around downtown or on the Greenway. And we'll see some pictures of that here in a second. Let's go to the next one. More numbers. Crimes against society is up, but what that is, is, those are, those are offenses that don't necessarily have a victim. Those are deemed harmful by the community and, you know, against law and order, but they are things that aren't, well, they're like prostitution is a perfect example of one, illegal gambling, some types of fraud. Those things are up, but the others are not. So just to point out the statistic there. And we're not going to do a bunch of numbers tonight, just so you know, that's pretty much the end of the numbers. So the next slide is about the police department. They're, they have a, a monthly meeting with OIC's youth. And it is a, OIC identifies kids to come to the police department and get an education on how public safety works. And they had 40 kids or so last session, and it's been a great success for those kids to understand how law and justice system works. They're also doing coffee with a cop, which is going up to the farmer's market and other places where they can go and meet with the community and answer questions. And it's also nice when kids can interact with them and feel safe, you know, in meeting a police officer and seeing they're just a human being and, you know, not anybody to ever be afraid of. So they're, they're out there doing that as well. And then you can see the, the picture there on the e-bikes, which were donated their grant, not a donation, I think. Well, maybe it was a donation from Crime Stoppers. And there was a grant as well for those bikes. There'd been a great response from the community on that, seeing those bikes around and especially on the Greenway. They had a big event this weekend, a big success.
I would just like to say that what's not pictured here is our chief involved with community engagement.
Yes.
Who was the, Chief of Police was selected for a bike by the dog. If you haven't seen the video, it's quite entertaining. But as Chief himself said, the best part of the video is here, hearing the children laugh all the way through, watching what's going on.
Yep.
And being greatly entertained and appreciating. And that was followed by the dunk tank, which wasn't as exciting because it was ice water, but there you go.
Yeah, but he was in there.
He was.
Chief got to get dunked, I think. Anybody successfully dunked you, Chief?
Probably was fun.
Well, they kept dunking.
Several, several people got him.
Wow.
Are those strictly pedal bikes or are those electric?
They're electric.
They're electric. Oh, cool.
Yeah. A little exercise, but, yeah. Okay.
You can go way fast on those things.
So let's talk about the, the Crime Intelligence and Analysis. 640 requests of that unit. They have their public-facing dashboards, which we're going to get another look at a little closer in a little bit. Major Crimes Unit in 2024 had 11 homicides, eight of them cleared with charges, which is great. And in 2025, eight homicides, five cleared with charges. Those are great numbers. Those are the numbers that make people feel better, that they're solving things. Operation Overdrive was 336 pounds of meth, seven pounds and 4,700 fentanyl pills, 25 pounds of cocaine, 7,100 pounds of marijuana, and 12 firearms. That's a DEA task force in partnership with YPD. And they also, it says here, DEA task force and other YPD personnel also participated in marijuana eradication operation, which resulted in over 16,522 marijuana plants and 2,400 pounds of processed marijuana being seized. So they are doing wonderful work out there. Drug Take Back Day was held in partnership with Crime Stoppers Safe Yakima Valley, during which 396 pounds of prescription drugs were collected from the community members who wished to have their prescriptions disposed of properly also. I think that's twice a year that they do that. Next. Okay, so I have a different slide. Isn't that interesting?
Yeah, we do.
Yeah, we're missing something.
So Property Crimes Unit is what I have. So Property Crimes Unit, I have a cute picture of Router. Is that what you guys see too?
That's what we got.
Okay. Fantastic. It talks about Property Crimes Unit. FBI coordination on a Haitian and Chilean criminal enterprise. In coordination with Kennewick PD, they unraveled a large organized theft operation and three embezzlement investigations from local businesses, which were $850,000, $550,000, $250,000 with arrests in all three, which is great investigation. That's a big, that's a big one.
There is, yeah.
Now you can see, aw. Thank you. Okay, next. We are in the legal department now. We're looking at the Prosecution Division. I don't know if you can find that. There we go. Okay, Prosecution Division had 2,880 cases referred to them, filing 2,106 cases. With the cap that is on indigent offense, you know, we have the cap that's in place now is 3,200. Of these 2,106 cases, 1,416 were in the Traffic and Property Unit, where 531 had a positive outcome, which means a conviction or a plea. Those are examples of positive outcomes. 56 were dismissed and the other 829 are still pending. The rest of the filed cases, 690, went to the Family and Community Violence Unit, where 243 had positive outcomes and 64 were dismissed.
This is kind of an aside. I was talking with an individual that monitors drunk driving convictions. And they made the comment that the municipal judges in our city are doing a much, much better job of holding people accountable than the county is. So I'm proud of our judges for that.
I will pass that on. Thank you. You know, the other thing that I don't have a slide for when you're talking about municipal court, is that this year they cleared all their Blake, they had that Blake backlog they had to do. They cleared that by June. They really worked hard on it and they partnered with legal and other departments to get it done. So amazing work.
Yeah, commendable.
Yep. Okay. And next, we go to the code enforcement. So Bill talked about code enforcement and the work of the officers. We also have a legal arm of code enforcement. The process starts with a letter explaining the violation and giving them an opportunity to comply. These are before and after pictures. If, if the owner doesn't comply, they have an opportunity to enter into voluntary compliance and provides positive steps. And it, most of the time, it really does happen that way. Further steps can be taken if it doesn't go that way, but the vast majority of the time, and I think the stat they gave me was over 80% of the time, it goes, people, people come into compliance. So these are before and after pictures of properties. And I think I have another slide showing more of the same. Yep. That's a big difference. And is there one more? I think so. Yes. Okay. All right. Airport. You've heard a lot about the airport, so I'm not going to talk too much about it, except these are pictures of it if you haven't been out there and seen it. This is, the construction project currently underway is the roof and HVAC replacement project. And you can see in the picture on the top there, all of that wood, that's currently, that's what it looks like. That's a pretty recent picture. It will wrap up this fall. Next slide, some pictures of what is put together for the baggage claim and the bathroom renovation. This is starting soon, as, as soon as we're done with the roof, basically, we will, we will begin the next phase. So we already have limited notice to proceed to order the carousel. I don't know if that's a technicality, but we're expecting completion in late, late spring and new bathrooms.
Did we get that issue resolved so that you were able to?
Yep.
Accept the funds?
Yes, sir.
Good.
We are moving forward. Okay, in the next slide, we can see airport overflow parking. Thank you to Rep. Chris Corey for helping us with that state funding. It will capture the lost parking revenue that we have during peak season when people want to park there. And there, there's going to be like a long-term location for parking now. And then the crosswind runway will just allow us to be kind of a, a place for emergencies and for, you know, when we have bad weather and we need to use that. So that is also in design. Next. Well, you know, you heard from Craig tonight, and he didn't even brag about this because he knew I was going to. Congratulations to our finance team. They won three huge awards. And you can see on the bottom one there, the distinguished budget presentation, look at all those years that they won it. Basically, looks like every year in a row, going back to 2020. So this is certificates of excellence, debt policy, investment policy, and the budget presentation award from the government, Government Finance Officers Association for this year's budget. Great job, finance.
Yep.
Okay, and finance has also been busy with implementing new things. So Questica is the budget software that you all approved last year when I first got here. And it, when we introduced priority-based budgeting, Questica handles that. So they've been implementing that now and it's ready to go. We're using it. It is, we'll get to see a little bit of that in a minute. They also launched Paymentis, which allows easier billing payment online for the public when they're paying for the utility bills. Installed a 24/7 kiosk out in front of City Hall, so folks can come and pay anytime and not have to come inside. And then they did 22,500 meter exchange, exchange for their water accounts. That's a lot.
Mm-hmm.
Big year.
Little, little creation underhand.
Yeah, we need it. Maybe I needed music with this all along. Okay.
Makes everything better.
Yes. Okay, and next slide. So we're on to the city clerk. City Clerk's office, I just have to say, is responsible for managing some really important required things that we do here at the city. They run the city council meeting and agenda minutes. And there's, there's Rosalinda over there looking extremely busy as I go through all this stuff. She does, her office is, is responsible for council meetings. They ensure our ordinances are enacted into code. They manage the many resolutions passed through the city council. They process hundreds of contracts after the legal department reviews them. And for their highest workload, and if you look at the numbers up there, they manage our public records. So if you look at public records, in 2024, there were 3,082 public records requests. They have two people doing that. And, and a third person who's spending 75% of their time just trying to help them. And this year, we're on pace to surpass that. Been a lot of public records requests. And so they've been very busy. Most of those, not most, a good number of those requests are complex, which we will which we will talk and explain a little bit more when we do our study session on transparency. We'll talk about what that means. Because it takes, it's, they can't just pull a record and send it. A lot of times it has to be refined and searched and there's a lot of criteria to understand. So we'll get into that more in the future. But in the meantime, thank you, Rosalinda and team. You do a lot of work for the city and do a great job. Okay, IT. We could talk a lot about IT too. There's a lot of stuff that's been done in IT. They, these are just high points. Microsoft three sixty five has been implemented, which is really nice and all of the apps that go with it too. And customizing all that and training everyone and teaching everyone is, is a process. The website has also been updated. If you haven't clicked on it lately, it's, it's got a nice big search right in the middle of the screen. So it's easy to find and you can
Dark mode.
You can, yes, you can turn it on dark mode. Yes, yes. It's exciting. There's also Granicus, which you guys have been interacting with the city council, but it's a way to manage our agendas very well and it's been working great. And then all of the custom applications that are done in IT. They do, I mean, there's, there's just a, a list here. Public Safety, Coban Video Review App Saves the City. That's something they created, sixty thousand dollars a year. Lease Management Application Saves Ten Thousand. Push to Talk Over Cellular System for Yakima Transit and Public Works Saves Six Hundred Thousand Dollars. I want to talk a little bit about artificial intelligence, AI. They finalized the AI policy and developed the Skynet, which is great. You know, what could possibly go wrong? There's a lot. If you watch TV.
Do we see that policy, the AI policy?
It, I think we're getting close. Yeah, you're gonna, this council will have to, it's a policy, so you'll have to go through all of that. So AI, when I was at the city managers conference, and thank you again for sending me that, we talked a lot about this and we got some lessons learned and it was very helpful. As we look at how it could work across the city, it's a little bit like I will call the Wild West still. And it's moving fast. It's moving incredibly fast and faster than regulations can move. And, and, you know, so we really want to have some rules of the road in our, in place. And that's what this group has really spent a lot of time thinking about and doing a great job.
Glad you're preparing for Skynet, guys.
More to come, because I think this is an opportunity for the city to be more efficient and, and also not do scary things. So, and the, and I'm sure we'll, we'll probably have a lot more to share about that in a future date. This is just a kind of a high level overview of what's happening around here. So next. So, eh, so Engage Yakima is one of the main priorities that you have. And we really did a lot to get out there this year. And I think some of it was budget related, but it really got people paying attention to the city, which is great. So town halls, we did four town halls in two thousand and twenty five. Spoke to community organizations and continue to do that. I know all of you are out there talking to people as well. Did a survey of the public. I think we can do more of those. And we'd used in-person outreach for the first time, where we went to basketball games and grocery stores and really talked to people there. And we continue to use open houses and Zoom and everything else we can think of to try to get to folks. You'll see the podcast that just launched was super fun. I talked about it last time. As we go forward with the podcast and it's on Spotify, YouTube, our website, we're looking at other free ways to get it out there. We're also looking at ways we can communicate where people go, like reels maybe. If we can do things like that and get little snippets of information about what's going on in the city, we can be creative with it too. I mean, this presentation is just a very high level snapshot of everything we could talk about. You know, we could put out a lot of content is what I'm saying. So we're looking at all of that and
Use AI to create the reels, guys.
Oh, hey, well, there you go. So future episodes on the podcast, I'm thinking, you know, police and fire and, and they get, there's a lot of interest in what they do and what all of you do and, you know, talking about all of the programs that we talked about tonight as well. So I think in the, in the coming weeks, you're going to see some great things on the podcast. Okay, and next. So I've talked a lot about this and when Gary came here, he and I spend a lot of time talking about the future and economic development and what we can do to really do business around the city of Yakima, how we're going to grow that pie that we talked about, where we have a lot of residents, how we can get business to help us balance out our portfolio here. So what we're using is existing tools. You can see ways we can look at them in a new way. So the comp plan, for example, is, is an opportunity for you to set a ten year plan for the community. We want to weave in some economic development into those thoughts, thought processes. Transportation planning, instead of thinking about traditional transportation, we want to go forward and think what, what could we do to encourage new development with business in this area or that area? So we're looking at those kind of things. And of course, you heard about permitting and planning being streamlined and moving faster with licensing and things like that. We're working hard to be a business friendly location. Incentivizing investment. We will be bringing to use some new tools to look at as a council, ways that we can partner with business so that we can be, we can encourage investment with them. We can also go out and seek investment. If we have a location that we think would be a good match or we have a landowner that has property, we can help them match, hey, this would be a good use of this location. What do you think? So we'll do a little outreach and talk to people like that over the next year and have been doing a little bit of that. Gary's been out there doing that work. Looking at non-general fund resourcing, what that means is, you know, we don't have a lot of economic development money anymore at the city. So we're going to try to figure out ways to afford what we would like to do. So we still need it, but we know general fund is a premium right now. So we're trying to be creative and think outside the box of ways that we can still do things in economic development. But reminding everyone to, economic development takes time. But this is my perspective on it as a business person. If the city provides a good foundation and we have certainty and we have policies that are easy to understand and we have good processes, like Bill described tonight, four and a half days, things like that. When we do that, we can help business feel good about investing in Yakima. And that is one of the main goals that I have here is just giving them that certainty so they can write a business plan that makes sense and locate here. That is that for that one. And then the last slide is the fun stuff. Okay, Transparency Portal. Surprise. So Councilmember Berg last week talked about a transparency portal. And I thought, wow, that is a great opportunity. So first thing, of course, I spent a day percolating about it, you know, thinking about what we could possibly do. Thursday, I went and talked to our IT team. And there's John in the back there. Wave at John. Randy Bonds. And I, I asked them a question about what we could possibly do with what we already have, because the city already has a lot of transparency things. They're just not necessarily easy to find. So can we consolidate all those things into one location? And, and they did, they didn't say, are you crazy? I'm like, I want it Tuesday. What do you think? So we're going to do a demonstration.
Five minutes, can you guys create?
So Randy is going to show us here what we have done so far. But I also want you to know, as we go forward, we will look at and bring back the study session that you requested. And it'll be way more in depth. Tonight's just a test drive, but it's pretty dang exciting with what we already have to share with the community.
So back in two thousand and seventeen, the GIS department put out this initial, we called it an open data portal. That was, it's essentially the same thing, but that was the buzzword then. It's changed to Transparency Portal. Same difference. So we put it out mostly for developers. We get common requests for, I want water lines in my area. I want sewer line, stormwater, whatever stuff in my area that they want to pull. So we didn't want to always be doing these emails and so we, well, let's just provide a place for them to get it. And they don't have to wait, you know, for eight to five and all that. So that's what this initially began at. And you'll see some remnants of that. But I knew we could use, leverage GIS in some of the software we have to do it. So we put together stuff we already had available, reorganized it a little, made it a little prettier and put some stuff up here, so.
Modernized it.
It's easier to find, too.
And we did just this afternoon from Vicky's direction. I went ahead and added it to the main website so you can find it under the council dropdown and also on the council page. So if you want to look at this tonight, go, go home and look at it and spend your time. I'm not going to click on the contracts one.
Fastest I've ever seen government move.
Yeah. The contracts ones takes a little bit to load. I'm gonna let it go, but it's all of the, it's our Laserfish program that you're, you're familiar with that lists all of our documents. So it has all of our contracts back in there several years, quite a ways back, so you can go look. Employee data. So it gives you the opportunity to look at careers available, our master pay ordinance that lists all of our different steps for our different positions, job class specs. And then we went ahead and put all of the current employees' titles, their department, what they're making in here. And this is searchable. So if I wanted to look, you know, to the IT department, I could go ahead and search. Let me just search for IT. And then I could, that's a terrible search. But you can see, I can see right in here what some of the IT services employees makes and all the different stuff. So it's right there on it. I can sort right away, sort and see what, if I put, let me clean this up a little bit.
This might cut down on some of the public records requests too.
That was the idea.
If I do IT services there, it grabbed transit as well. But you can see right away, you know,
That's awesome.
the different wages, the different positions. So that was a really fun one to put together. We hope to make it a little more automated than it is. Financial and Capital Projects, this talks about that Questica software that you guys approved last year. So this is our first dashboard of many to come out for this, out of the finance office. So this is the budget for this year. You can also go back and look at other budgets for years past, years future. You can see overall, you know, police, fire, their budget versus total. You can see, click on percentages, see where things land.
Holy cow.
Wow.
This is fantastic.
So, and we hope in the near future to expand on this, to be actually a little bit drilled down and say, okay, a police, you know, here's the different sections in police. All right, I want to see, you know, investigations and their wages and their regular wages versus the overtime wages. So things like that. So this is just really in its infancy on this, even this part, it's really cool.
That's, that part's coming?
Yeah, that's coming. That's coming, yeah. We hope to have it today, but it wasn't quite ready yet. So hopefully in the next week or two.
It's only been three days, so.
Yeah.
Go faster. I do have a question. As we move forward with this, is there a way to auto populate? Like if we do a new contract with someone?
Yeah, that, that's all in place.
It's already in place, okay.
Yeah, automation's king. So GIS data here, and this, this really is the part that's been around the longest and it's used by developers all the time right now. And I want to just give a quick example of like a water one. So I could go in here, I'm a data guy. Okay, I want to see the water department real quick. Go ahead and load. You know, I want to use this. Oh, it's just off the screen for some reason. Sorry. Why is this not letting me say this? The bar is in the way.
It looks good up on the screen.
Yeah, there's a bug on here. It's just, it's behind the bar. I can't get to it for some reason on this, on this particular computer. But I could automatically map it. I could see all the fire hydrants in the city real quick and really easy. I could see the water lines that go along with it. Sorry, that one's not working, working on this browser. I don't know why it's hiding it below the, the taskbar on the bottom. But they can, there's all kinds of this stuff that's here. We have a lot of data out here that, that we put out all the time, so it's, it's really great. Permits, so this takes you right to SmartGov, which is our permitting software. And so you can see all the permits that are here right now. This will give you a PDF so I can see the August building permits issued. We are working with them right now to connect our API so we can make this more friendly because honestly, these PDFs, the information's there, it's just not organized great. So rather than using it like this, we'd like to drop it all into a map because, because GIS, I mean, why not?
Yes.
So drop it all on a map, make it searchable, make it more easy for folks to, to use the, the information that's there. Make it, make it more accessible. So that is coming in the future. I have, I have an open trouble ticket with them right now. So I will, it will get done soon.
But maybe two weeks.
Yeah, so hopefully, yes. Yakback Data Explorer, so this is our Yakback. So I think this is very interesting. You can, you can view this dashboard full size or if you're a data nerd like me, you can jump into the data set. But we've also provided this dashboard. So even if I'm just a person wanting to follow up on my request ID, I could put my request ID in here. I could select dates, but right away you see in the last three years, which is shown right here, we've had seventeen thousand Yakback requests. We've closed seventeen thousand and thirty seven. We have around two hundred open. You can also explore things like clicking the, and, yeah, I want to see just graffiti for the last three years. I want to see only the open graffiti. So you've got all of these opportunities to explore the data. Take a look, see what, see what's up. So all that data is out there and really fun to you.
I know. I'm going to be here forever.
Yes, it is. I'm a statistics nerd, so this is bread and butter.
Okay, we appreciate that.
Yes. Fire data, same kind of a general layout here. You can, you know, be a nerd and grab the data for yourself and dump it into your own applications or into your own stuff, download a CSV. This one's really fun as well. They've got the fire zone, so if I want to see what Station Ninety Two has responded to, I can see right away, click off. And this is in the last two years, so four thousand calls. Where I could compare that, if I wanted to take off Ninety Two and let's look at Ninety One. And also look, you can see how many more calls Ninety One has done than Ninety Two.
Is it broken down by what kind of calls?
Priority and low priority.
Okay.
So high priority, sorry, high priority and low priority. And then it also has trends last six weeks, we're trending downward, which is good. Days of the weekday happen initiated by nine one one or officer or a telephone call. And then the hours to the day it happens. So you can, you can explore the data in here. And these all change with the filters. And also I'm going to reset the filter real quick because this is fun. You can also do it just by where you're looking at the map. So as I zoom in on the map, everything, I didn't mean to click you. Everything on the sides changed. So it's got, where I'm looking, there's twenty three thousand calls. Vicky and I were looking at this earlier. We zoomed into an assisted living facility and saw a lot of calls at that place, which you could expect. But they're all EMS. And you can see details on the call when I clicked on that one there. You can see it was a fire alarm. There's no personal information in here, of course, but you can see, you know, general information about the call. So really neat stuff on that. And then whoops, went too far. I'll go back to that. And then finally, the police data. So like Vicky had mentioned earlier, the, the Crime and Intelligence Unit has put together a lot of different data sets here and we just linked straight to it. So Data Explorer, the Crime Trends Dashboard. We've also worked heavily with the Domestic Violence Vehicle Collision, which is one of my favorites. So you can, there's a whole bunch of data here. We work with the State Department of Transportation to pull this data every quarter. And we pull it down. It's got a whole lot of information, you know, age, sex, who was involved, all the different, all the different things you could want to know about a collision, it's all in there. It's really, I find it fascinating.
It's because you're a data nerd.
Yes, yes.
A murder map.
Yes. The murder map.
Hey, oh, the murder map.
We're all in there for that one.
You have to go in and sign up if you're going to commit one.
Yeah.
You need a permit.
This was actually Detective Shaw, one of his ideas on how to solve unsolved murders. So it's, and it's actually, it allows you to go in there and you can click. And if you've got any information, you can go and provide it to the police right there. It'll connect them with the right detective. And it's actually helped solve murders, which, you know, GIS, you don't think of it as helping solve murders, but apparently it can. So it's pretty, pretty cool. Use of Force and then also Flock. So this is just kind of a start to, I think, what, what we have for transparency. I don't know if you want to add anything more to that, but.
Yeah, no, we, we talk a little bit about what, I think this is a lot of what you were hoping for, but I really would love feedback when we do our study session. We can talk more about the public record side of it. I think the public record side is, is maybe the missing piece that you would like. That part is complex. We can provide though the statistics and they are pretty overwhelming so that when someone puts in a request and they see their number two hundred and ninety one in line, they might understand. Or, you know, at least if we show the processing amounts and things like that. So we're, we're looking at that and how we could do that. We're already tracking a lot of that data. So we'll work together and, and put together some ideas for all of you to look at when we do our study session. But I think we have a pretty good start.
Yeah, it looks great.
John and Randy, thank you so much. It's just amazing what you have done in a very short period of time.
Thank you, yeah.
Go tech people.
If you don't have any more questions, I think that is it for tonight. I know, again, out there for the employees and the staff, we have an amazing team. And I, I hope, I didn't do justice for what they really have done. I'm grateful, I know the community is grateful for a lot of these things, so thank you to all of you in TV land.
I just want to, I have always had great appreciation for the staff in the city of Yakima because I think they do excellent work. I know they're challenged, I know they're stretched and it's just amazing to see it happen.
I agree.
Well, I'd also like to say thank you to you, Vicky, I mean, this is a one year of you being drinking from a fire hose and, you know, trying to get all these things in order, so, yeah, no, thank you.
Thank you for saying that, it's been a great year. Thank you for the job. I love it.
Good.
Loved it.
Nice.
The only thing left on tonight's agenda is adjournment.
All right, Madam Mayor, I move to adjourn to our next regular meeting on September sixteenth at five-thirty PM here at City Hall.
A second.
So we have motion by Deputy Mayor Brown and a second by Councilman D C O to adjourn to our next City Council Regular Meeting on September the sixteenth, twenty-twenty-five, five-thirty PM here at City Hall. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any nays, then we are adjourned.